Testing, one, two, three, testing. Okay, thank you. Please. Well, good evening, members, and good evening to members of the public that's listening online to our AGM, our annual AGM. Members, apologies. There's a few out. Okay, thank you, Ollie Baxter.
Councillor Mackelbar.
And councillor Nelson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, councillor McComber Walker and councillor Hawke.
Okay, members, declarations of interest, members, anyone want to make requests off the floor now? In advance, okay, happy to continue on, all right. Agenda item three, remarks by the outgoing Lord Mayor. So where do I start? The past year has flown by and it has been an absolute honour to serve as the Lord Mayor for our borough. This experience has been nothing short of brilliant and anyone who knows me can attest to how much I have truly enjoyed it. Firstly, I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to my party colleagues for placing their faith in me, trusting that I could fulfil this role and nominating me last June. I also want to express my deepest gratitude to my family who encouraged me when I had doubts whether I could do this. To my husband James, my daughter Anna and my son James, you know you mean the world to me, but your love and support have been invaluable and without your encouragement and help at home, enjoying this role would have been extremely difficult. And I also want to thank my mum and dad, who I know have been quietly praying for my good health and wisdom and their sport, their support has been a tremendous comfort during my term. I also want to thank my deputy Lord Mayor, Sorka McKeown, who has stepped in for so many events I couldn't attend and hosted numerous civic receptions. Together, we have recognised countless community groups and sporting achievements. And do you know what, I think it'll be a while before we will even look at another chicken goose on, never. And I mean that. I want to express my sincere gratitude to our staff, to every single individual across the organisation. Your help, encouragement and support have made this year incredibly enjoyable. Special thanks to the Chief Executive's Office, Roger and Dawn, and for the Lord Mayor's Office, Susan and April, and for our communications team for their direct assistance, but also to every department I worked alongside to promote the services we as a council deliver. Fellow members, I want to sincerely thank each and every one of you for your encouragement when you were at events and receptions. Your support during those evenings meant a great deal to me. I made it a priority to attend as many events as possible and host numerous groups in the mayor's parlour, always ensuring our guests felt welcomed, valued and enjoyed a lovely supper with plenty of tea and coffee. And I sincerely thank our catering team here in the Civic Centre and the caterers at the Palace. They were wonderful to work with and I will miss our regular interactions. I also want to thank the photographers, but especially Liam, who captured not just group shots, but the whole essence of an evening which were creating lasting memories. When asked about the most memorable moments of my memorable year, I honestly replied, everything. I mean that, everything. Whether it was visiting businesses, attending events, hosting receptions, along with meeting many local people from our communities, that have been some of the highlights. These amazing people are the lifeblood of our borough, volunteering countless hours to improve the quality of life for others. And given that this is Volunteer Week, I extend a special thanks to each and every one of our volunteers. I am delighted to share that earlier this evening, I presented Charis Cancer Care, my charity for this year, with a cheque of £20,400. Oh folks, you're going to make me emotional, I'm nearly there. I want to thank every single person who supported the various charity events and collections over the year. Your generous donations and attendance when significantly aid individuals and families affected by cancer. Before I finish, it would be remiss of me not to mention how honoured and privileged I was to confer our first female recipient, Gloria Honeyford, with the Freedom of the Borough as one of my final events. This occasion was truly special. But finally, I wish the incoming Lord Mayor and Deputy Lord Mayor every success for the year ahead. May they be blessed with health and strength to undertake this civic honour with immense privilege representing our borough. Thank you once again to everyone who has supported me or played any part in my year as Lord Mayor. Thank you all, thank you. Councillor Nelson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I just want to give a brief commentary as well on what I think was an excellent year for you. I mean, I think you're a very warm person and you're a very, very family centred person. And I genuinely think that radiated across our borough while you were in the role. And a massive, massive well done on your charitable success. I know that will mean the world to you. And what a legacy and an imprint that you'll have left behind you that will be far reaching and long lasting. And I hope you do get some well earned rest now, time with your family. And what I want to say to you councillor Tinsley is no need, get the food up and don't be worrying about any elections, you just rest those feet.
No, no, no comment councillor Nelson, no comment. Councillor Alexander.
Thank you. And yeah, really just to follow on to that, I just want to say, a massive thank you from myself and also, you know, from us at the Alliance Party. It's my first year in council and certainly any event that I attended with you, always making sure that, you know, sort of that we were doing sort of what we were supposed to, making us feel welcome. So it was, you know, very, very sort of reassuring to see at events and very well done on the year. And yes, you can now look forward to some well earned rest. Thank you.
Thank you so much councillor Alexander. Councillor Flaherty.
Thank you. I'll still call you Lord Mayor for now. I think it's fair to say on behalf of the Ulster Unionist Party, that both you ladies really had a tremendous year in office. You've grasped every opportunity. You have a lovely way with you in hosting events and so many events across the borough. And of course, you've just announced a superb amount for your charity, which I know is very special and means a lot to you. I just want to remark my own thanks to both you ladies, both you and the Deputy Lord Mayor for facilitating a number of very important events for me with the young people and particularly one evening, which I'll not forget with the brave parents. And I didn't want to go without mentioning that, Margaret. I want to thank you again for the time you spent that evening and faithful counsel you gave to those parents. Both of you ladies have represented yourselves and the borough really so professionally and eloquently all year. And a huge, so a huge well done to you is because the Lord Mayor's Office, if anything, at times is a feat of insurance. You kept up the energy, you kept up the smiles and you made sure everyone that came through those doors were really made feel very special. And that's probably the most important part of it. So well done and thank all the memories of a wonderful year, ladies.
Thank you councillor Flaherty, Alderman Baxter.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And it usually takes a few weeks before we'll stop calling you Lord Mayor, but we'll try our best. And it is strange to see you sitting there with no chain. But you've done a fantastic year, Lord Mayor, just on behalf of our party and your colleagues and your friends. I think we all, I think we all think the same, that what a fantastic year you had. In terms of the civic receptions, and there was, seemed to be an awful lot of them for you this year, Lord Mayor, but certainly whenever people were in, you made them feel most welcome. And you're very, very thorough and the attention to detail and all those things. Did you also agree that as a party member here, when it comes to getting things done, Margaret's the go to person. And I think in terms of your Lord Mayor year, that was the same, very, very thorough. Everybody made her feel very, very welcome from right across the community. And what a fabulous amount of money you used the charity too. And that really is, as councillor Nelson said, that's really the legacy that you leave behind as well. Because, you know, that's £20,000 that charity wouldn't have had. So that'll go a long way to support, to be supporting those families that are in dire need of it. So just to thank you for the year, Lord Mayor, that you've had. It'll be a bit of a transition for you back on the benches. And I'll tell you what your husband said, what he has waiting for you when you get home. He has a bit of a list of work to do, some things that he maybe didn't get, didn't get done and didn't get done throughout the year, maybe got away with because you weren't maybe just about as much. But you'll certainly be able to, about a lot more now. So we wish you well and congratulations on a fabulous year, Lord.
Thank you, Alderman Baxter. James Tinsley, you said, remember, councillor O'Handlon.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And can I join with others in thanking you for your year and that of the Deputy Lord Mayor? I know I've attended a number of engagements with both of yous and you've been very welcoming to everyone into, into the chambers. As I said to you downstairs, it'll be tomorrow, although I think you said a certain MP candidate might have something different in mind, but it'll be tomorrow, things will slow down. The emails will quieten off a bit and Susan will not be on the other end of the phone looking to know where yous are. So take some time with your respective families and enjoy some really well earned time off. So thank you again.
Thank you councillor O'Handlon. Councillor Radcliffe.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Where has that year went? Unreal, I can't believe that that's your, your year up. But no, I would like to pay tribute to you. I think you've done a fantastic job as Lord Mayor. You've been a fantastic ambassador for ABC Council. And as some of the other members have alluded, you have absolutely been fantastic at the reception events. You've been very warm and welcoming. And I think every time I was there, the Lord Mayor was trying to get me to eat more food. She was trying to feed me up with apple pies and stuff. So, but no, the receptions and all were really, really enjoyable for my first year as councillor. And I wish you all the best for your time at the side of the chamber. Thank you.
So members, thank you all very much indeed. And it's, that's me. I overend out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tinsley. Members, if we turn then to agenda item four, and 4.1 is the appointment of the Lord Mayor for the incoming year 2024-2025. And this year, the position of Lord Mayor falls to Sinn Féin. And if I call upon the party's nominating officer councillor Nelson to provide a nomination for the position of Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Roger. And I do this with great pleasure this evening. I wish to nominate councillor Sarah Duffy into this role. I have to say, as I'm, from one mother to another mother, the best role that you will ever be blessed with in life is being a mum. You live for it and everything you do from becoming a mum becomes about the children that you have. And every breath you breathe and every decision you make is all about them. And that's why I think this just has another wee tinge tonight, because we have councillor Duffy's two girls in the audience with us. And how beautiful they look, they're all two little princesses. And they are the proudest princesses in the borough this evening. And it's just so lovely because I know that they are going to have such a fantastic year, because Sarah does everything for the girls and she'll bring them with her. And the experiences that they will have throughout and across this borough is amazing. So Sarah, you're a great role model. And I'm so proud of you, of them. And I wish you every success on the role. Your parents, Connor and Eileen here with us tonight and your granny, Mrs Duffy, they are believing behind you there, and rightly so. Because they have to get some credit for the great woman that you are. And Mary will be a great support to you in the year ahead. We're very proud as a party group and you have been smashing. I mean, you are just new into the role and already one year in, you have made a real impact in Armagh City. And you've been a real core part of this group. You've really hit the ground running. So I have no doubt of the impact that you will have across the borough. I'm delighted to nominate you to this role tonight. I wish you well and the success. And I just want to finish on this point. I was sitting last night just actually writing down a few words to say about councillor Duffy. And eventually I'll say some nice things to you about councillor McGowan. And I just, as I was writing these words down, I took a wee break to scroll on Twitter. And there was a wee quote on it about never admiring quietly. And as women, I often think that sometimes we maybe see another woman doing well and we don't say it out loud. And I think that this is going to be the year for women. So I'm going to admire, admire you this evening councillor Duffy very openly, as I have done with councillor Tinsley, and I will do with councillor McGowan. And I wish you well and I wish you every success.
Thank you councillor Nelson. And thank you chief executive. And good evening, everyone. It is a, it is a great honour and a privilege for me to accept the office and the role of Mayor for Armagh, Banbridge and Kirkavon Council for the forthcoming year. I have to admit that being the first citizen of the borough was never on my bingo card. But if life has taught me anything so far, it's that the best things you don't see coming. Firstly, I would like to be associated with remarks to the outgoing Mayor and Deputy Mayor. I have watched this year as you have both worked tirelessly in your roles, representing the borough in a way that has exemplified the whole ethos of ABC Council. The bar has well and truly been set high for this upcoming year. I would like to thank my Sinn Féin party colleagues for the many messages, phone calls and words of advice over the weekend since my nomination. I appreciate every single one of them. What a team we have. My family is here in the chamber tonight and I want to welcome them here. This role would never have been an option for me without their love and support. My twin daughters, Emily and Lucia, are also here with us tonight. They are my entire world. And I know that's no different to what any other parent would say about their children. But when you are a single parent, those words take on a resonance in a way that sometimes others would fail to understand. Tonight is a proud moment for me, but nothing in life will ever make me prouder than how the three of us have navigated the past eight years together. Anyone who has met those girls will know just how truly special they are. They have told many people over the weekend that their mummy is the mayor and they are going to live in the palace. But after seeing my diary, I think they're on to something. My sincere thanks to the constituents of Armagh City who put their faith in me and elected me as a councillor this time last year. It has been a whirlwind of a year and I have had the privilege of meeting many people from all different walks of life. It has been a year filled with many positives and it has opened my eyes to issues, struggles and ongoing concerns that I wish to focus on in this upcoming year. I also have an appreciation for the service of our council officers, what they do behind the scenes and how passionate they are about their roles. During this year, I would like to make a difference and use my platform to start conversations and create a change for the thing that I am passionate about. For anyone who knows me, my charity of the year, Women's Aid will come as no surprise. It is very close to my heart for many reasons. The charity provides shelter in a storm for many women and children across our borough. They provide educational opportunities, places of safety and short term crisis management. There is no demographic across age, income or background that this does not affect. Women's Aid faces chronic underfunding at a time when violence against women and girls is at an all time high. We have all been horrified by the tragic deaths of local women Natalie McNally and Katie Simpson in recent years. And tonight, I want to pay tribute to their families as they continue their fight for justice. As of tonight, there are 380 women across our borough who are on a waiting list for refuge and support from Women's Aid. That is 380 women who are currently at risk of coming to serious harm or death at the hands of their abuser. I hope with funds raised from this upcoming year, as a council, together we can make a real difference to those women. Finally, and you'll be glad to know, I want to give you all my commitments that I will use this office to the very best of my ability. I will continue to reach out the hand of friendship. I will be a mayor for all. And I will continue to do everything in my power to attract jobs, investment and opportunities to our areas. This is an incredible place. It is full of incredible people and I know together we can build an incredible future. Gormailamayagav, thank you.
Now I'm going to hand over to the chief executive for the next agenda item. Now I'm going to hand over to the chief executive for the next agenda item.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The next item on the agenda, four point two. Is the appointment of the deputy Lord Mayor for the incoming year. But Lord Mayor, maybe before the deputy Lord Mayor would vacate the office, she may wish to say a few words.
Firstly, I would like to thank my party colleagues for giving me this amazing opportunity this year. And to that go on, Lord Mayor, Alderman Tinsley, I want to say congratulations on a job well done. An extremely busy year and done an excellent job. You always treated everyone you met with respect and a friendly smile. And I'm sure your family will be glad to have you home now. And a special mention to April and Susan in the Lord Mayor's office. We are so lucky to have such a hardworking team behind the scenes. Satan especially, who goes above and beyond in her job. No matter what time of day it was, she was always at hand. And anyone who has had the honour of being the Lord Mayor or the deputy Lord Mayor, I know will say the same. This year, I was very fortunate to meet so many great people, from talented athletes, musicians, artists in our borough, to the amazing volunteers and the community groups we have. Each group I met made me feel extremely proud of our borough and I'm so thankful that I have been able to see it firsthand. I want to wish the new incoming mayor and the deputy mayor all the best for their term. And I'm sure you'll both love it as much as I have. Thank you.
Hey, we're going to bring in councillor Nelson next.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And just as Sorka and councillor McGowan is vacating the seat, I just want to congratulate her also on a very successful year. It took some convincing to get her into that seat. Like many women, she often undersells herself. But I knew that she would be a fantastic deputy mayor and so she was, which also proves that I'm always right. So I was very proud of how you conducted yourself. She pushed yourself. She pushed boundaries. You were so natural in the role and you gave a lot back in the local communities, right across the borough. There was no ask too much, be it a fundraising donation, attending an event or even the showing up in a front in order to get it that we boost. I feel like you were a shining light and you've proven yourself to be a leader. And I'm very proud. So congratulations and you can now relax.
Going to bring in councillor Lavery.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I suppose we're missing of ourselves not to pass wonderful comment on the term of the outgoing deputy Lord Mayor. I think, you know, behalf of Lance, councillor McGowan did a fantastic job, as pointed out. Very easy way at those various civic receptions and all the events you attended. Called a deputy Lord Mayor, but it's a very busy role, given a large borough that we have. Some part of my own party grouping wished to pass on our thanks to councillor McGowan. But just while I'm speaking, Lord Mayor, I would just like to have the opportunity to congratulate you in your role. As has been said, it's a very exciting time. It's going to be a very exciting year for yourselves, for your two girls, for your parents and for your granny. It's going to be a tough year. It's going to be a long year, but I think it'll go by in the blink of an eye. And we certainly look forward to working with you and your role in the year ahead to improve the borough as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you for that, councillor Lavery. And next I'm going to bring in Alderman Baxter.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And I suppose you should have come in earlier just to congratulate you in your elevation to the first citizen of this borough. And I wish you well for your incoming year. Obviously politically will be, you know, dramatically opposed, but I think it's a very important role and the impartiality that it brings and I've no doubt. And as others have before you, that you'll, you know, you'll welcome everybody to the chamber and to the palace or wherever. Whatever that happens to be throughout your year in office. So I wish you well with it. And to Sorka, and apologies first of all, Sorka, the outgoing Lord Mayor cracked me last week. I've been calling you sorcerer probably to your face all year. But apologies for that. Apologies happen when it comes to, when it comes to Irish, I'm maybe not that, I'm maybe not that open. And so I do apologise for that. But look, you know, a couple of the, a couple of the events that I was at and you were hosting. You couldn't have been more welcome and more friendly and certainly, certainly connected, especially the last one we were at with the boxing club in Bambridge. You certainly connected the young people there. So I wish you both well. I suppose you can say that women are sort of under, there's not too many women in politics, but I think any women that are in politics seem to rise to the top very quickly. And I think we've proved that in the last couple of years here, where the top table has all been women. So all credit to you. And all credit to everybody that takes on these roles. So we just wish you well, the outgoing deputy Lord Mayor and wish you well as the incoming Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Baxter. I appreciate those remarks. And next we'll bring in councillor O'Hamlin.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And can I first of all add my congratulations and thanks to councillor McGowan. I did mention it earlier on in the speech, but just again to reiterate that, thanks. I wanted to come in and congratulate you on assuming the high office of Lord Mayor of the wonderful city of Armagh. And of course, the borough of Armagh City, Bambridge and Craigavon. It's going to be a busy year for you and no doubt. You'll take till it like a duck to water. You'll see parts of the borough that you've never seen before and you'll meet some amazing people from every part of our community. I know, speaking to you in advance of tonight, you've decided to choose the Armagh chain for your year. And as I explained to you earlier, the chain has great significance. It is a cross of St Patrick to represent the importance of Armagh as the ecclesiastical capital of Ireland. The antique Irish harp, which has been adopted by City of Armagh Rugby Club, the Armagh Cricket Club and of course Armagh G A. Not to mention Armagh harps, though I think you're a personal woman. So that might be a bit of an issue. The crest also contains the Irish crown. And this signifies the history and the territory of Owen Mocker as the seat of the High Kings of Ireland. And the crown also recognizes Armagh and it's a place of interments of the High Kings, especially Brian Brew. So it's great to see you choose that chain. Can I wish you and of course your beautiful daughters Lucia and Emily every very successful year? You will be our Lord Mayor, but you, they will be our little mareesses. They can be very proud of you and I'm delighted to see them with you in the chamber tonight, along with your mommy and daddy and your granny as well. I wish you well and I hope you make some very special memories together in the incoming year. And maybe, just maybe, there are some of us here that can hope that after a great day in Celtic Park yesterday. You'll be the Lord Mayor of Armagh City, Bambridge and Craigavon to welcome home Armagh team and Sam Maguire later this year. Thank you.
We live and hope, councillor O'Hamlin. I'm going to now pass across to chief executive for item agenda four point two.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So we now move to the appointment of the deputy Lord Mayor for the incoming year twenty twenty four, twenty five. And this time it falls to the Ulster Unionist Party. And if I could ask the party's nominating officer, councillor Flaherty, to provide a nomination for this position.
They weren't shy, they're very well behaved. I've got to help. It takes me, takes us in the Ulster Union Party to have some helpers sometimes, doesn't it? Yeah, it does. Very special this evening, Lord Mayor and chief executive on my first duty as nominating officer. To nominate my colleague and my friend and my new work husband, as he's been called, councillor Kyle Savage, to the position of deputy Lord Mayor. Haven't served before, twenty twenty, twenty one. Somebody will remember just when the borough was dealing with really an unprecedented health emergency. I trust that this will give you, councillor Savage, an opportunity to finish what you started that year. Just like then, we are assured that Kyle will take on this role with his full heart and soul. Be assured, Kyle, that you have the whole Ulster Unionist team across the borough behind you. And we know that your loving and supportive, supportive family will be with you all of the way. Many of us still even in this chamber, I suppose, remember your late father, George Savage, a passionate advocate for his community. And clearly the apple doesn't fall very far from the tree. I know your family are extremely proud of the work that you continue as our way. I know too what a wonderful privilege it is to serve our borough in a position of this responsibility. And I know that you will bring a maturity, wisdom, and I didn't use the word older, did you hear, and experience to this office this incoming year. Both of you have a great year ahead for everyone in our borough. Thank you, chief executive and Lord Mayor.
Madam Lord Mayor, chief executive, Alderman and councillors. First of all, I'd like to thank my party colleagues in the Ulster Unionist Party for nominating me to the position of deputy Lord Mayor for the incoming year. It's an honour for me to take up this role again. As my colleague has said back in twenty twenty, during the dark days of Covid, I had the pleasure of serving as well. But I want to thank them for giving me this opportunity. I want to thank my wife, Mary, daughters, Joanne, Felicity and Isabella. And my family and friends for all their support over the years. I want to thank the constituents of Lagan River for putting their trust in me again. And I look forward to serving them and indeed the whole borough worldwide. My family, faith and culture are always central within my life. And this will give me great strength in the incoming year ahead. As many of you know, I volunteer within Tata Rural Support Network, which brings us close to so many problems that exist within our communities. Such as isolation and wellbeing issues that affect each and every one within. I will use my term in office to raise awareness of these problems and to help build confidence, capacity and to empower our communities. Thank you, Madam Lord Mayor.
Oh, thank you, Lord Mayor. And just to pass on our party's congratulations. Deputy Lord Mayor, councillor Savage, it's good to see Lagan River still on the map, with no doubt. And now you're doing it from an elevated office, you will certainly be talking about that throughout the next twelve months. And I think it is good, you know, given that you were there during Covid and I suppose didn't get the opportunities that others have got in the past. So yeah, I wish you, I wish you well in your term.
And now I'm going to bring in councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. On behalf of our party, I just want to wish councillor Savage best wishes for the year ahead and for his family as well. I know you'll continue to support many groups in rural communities, particularly in Lagan River, as been mentioned. So congratulations and good luck for the year ahead as deputy mayor. Thank you.
Next up, we have councillor Nelson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And I want to wish Kyle the huge good luck in his time ahead. I think it's great that you had Covid, you didn't get the opportunities maybe that you wanted. And I have no doubt that you'll make a lasting impact this year. And I know that the rural communities of our borough will be delighted to see you in this role and you'll be a great and a huge voice for them. So congratulations and wish you well. And I hope you enjoy your year.
And if we could have councillor O'Hamlin next.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And can I add my congratulations to you, Kyle, on assuming the office of deputy Lord Mayor? You're a well-known advocate for the rural communities and I know you'll continue that this year. And I hope that you get to see life beyond remote. We will very much welcome you to other rural parts of the borough. But in sincereness, wish you every success during the year and enjoy it. Thank you.
Next I have Alderman Barr.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Lord Mayor. And congratulations on your tenure. My wee fellow Billy was just a wee bit younger than your two girls. And he called the palace daddy's big house. So maybe they'll end up calling the palace mummy's big house. So, but enjoy your year. Listen to what the chief executive is going to tell you sometime this week. Follow the policies. Read over your notes. Keep Kyle in check. But listen, you do have a well experienced person there beside you. So lean on him if need be or hit him a dig in the ribs if need be also. You have that pleasure to do because you're quite close to him. Also, just to say congratulations to yourself, Kyle. I know it wasn't a great year during Covid, as Alderman Spears would have said. And congratulations to yourself. It'll be interesting to see what happens down the line whenever county down and meet county Armagh. To see who's going to be fighting that one out. But good luck and enjoy it. And just to add on to what was said about the chain, the chain was donated back in nineteen sixty six by the Royal Ashafusialiers and it was made in London. So enjoy that and look after it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Barr, for the solid advice. Next I'm going to bring in councillor Radcliffe.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd just like to take the opportunity to congratulate you, Kyle. I've known you many years, but I've got to know you a lot better as last year here with being in the council. And I hope you really enjoy your year as deputy Lord Mayor. Congratulations again. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And members, we now move on to item four point three, which is the appointment of positions of, or the other positions of responsibility. Namely, those are the chair and the vice chair roles for our various committees and members. You have a copy of those contained within your meeting pack. So, Lord Mayor, it's really to seek agreement to adopt that schedule of positions of responsibilities.
Members, can I check that we're all agreed? Thank you.
And, Lord Mayor, then, the next item, agenda item five, is the appointment to committees. And once again, members will have received within their pack details of the membership of each of the various committees. And again, it's to seek agreement to the nominations for those appointments for the incoming year.
And again, members, if we're all agreed. Okay, item agenda six, I have no items of correspondence. I also have no other AOB. So, members, that is all for tonight. Thank you for a very enjoyable evening and safe home. Thank you.